Up this work session. Join me in a pledge of allegiance and then remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilman Coligan would like to make a statement?
Yes. We'd like to have a moment of silence to start the meeting first. Thank you. I have a prepared statement I would like to read. Last Tuesday, the town board was conducting its weekly work session, not knowing what was happening at the Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. On May fourteenth, just two weeks prior, a mass shooting occurred in Buffalo, New York at the Tops Friendly Market Store, a soupette market in the East Side neighborhood. Ten black people were killed and three others injured. Police arrested a heavily armed eighteen-year-old white male suspect involved in what authorities described as a racially motivated violent extremist. Once again, the suspect was wearing tactical gear as well as carrying a Bushmaster XM fifteen and AR fifteen-style weapon. The victims killed in Robb Elementary shooting were nineteen fourth-grade students and two teachers. Once again, tactical gear and an AR fifteen-style rifle was the weapon of choice. And yes, once again, we have an eighteen-year-old committing these senseless murders of children who are so young and defenseless. I want to make sure that this issue is not a political debate. But as a town board member, I can no longer ignore the acts of hatred and violence. I pray that we can address this crisis in a bipartisan way and come together to do what the vast majority of Americans want done. A mass shooting is defined as a minimum of three or four victims of gun violence. In two thousand nineteen, we had four hundred and seventeen mass shootings in the United States. In twenty twenty, it's six hundred and eleven mass shootings. In twenty twenty-one, six hundred and ninety-three mass shootings. The numbers keep going up. In two thousand twenty-two, in the first four or five months, we have well over two hundred mass shootings already in the United States. We've all heard the expression enough is enough. Personally, I am tired of hearing that expression. When is enough? When can we expect our representatives in Washington to sit down, not as Republicans, not as Democrats, not as independents, but as elected officials that represent all Americans? First, the argument about whether this is a gun issue or a mental health issue is absurd. Obviously, both of these issues need to be addressed if we're going to properly find effective measures that reduce gun violence. I also don't believe that we, as a nation, are going to eliminate all acts of gun violence. It's just not going to happen. But I do believe that we still live in a democracy. And that current polls show that a vast majority of Americans, approximately eighty-nine percent, regardless of political affiliation, want required and improved background checks. Will background checks be the sole solution to this problem? No. The elimination of assault weapons and high-capacity magazines would also go a long way to helping reduce gun violence as well. That will be a much more difficult task. But just the fact that you can finally get bipartisan efforts and discussions on this critical issue would be a major step forward. It also would go a long way in protecting first responders, particularly if we're concerned about our police force and people that respond to these mass shootings being outgunned. In addition, these efforts would help the families of those killed in mass shootings cope with their losses and aid them in the healing process. You think about that. There are thousands of families that are impacted directly by gun violence. Seeing somebody do something and government finally getting sensible gun legislation passed would go a long way to help heal those families. They deserve our thoughts and prayers, but they also require a willingness to take necessary steps to curb gun violence. People's Second Amendment rights do not need to be taken away. Repeat that. Second Amendment rights do not need to be taken away. But gun owners need to be deemed law-abiding citizens and of sound mind. The mental health issues in our communities have to be addressed as well. It's an epidemic in this country. Don't ever think that these acts of violence could not happen here. Rather than arguing these points, let's work together to fix what is obviously broken. As Americans, we need to protect our children, to protect our schools and our communities and make them safe. We can do this. I believe we can do this. The first thing I'd love to see happen is support gun violence research. A lot of people talk about gun violence that don't know what they're talking about, probably including me. I would like to have a better understanding of why people do what they do. And I think research goes a long way in doing that. The other thing is to establish a comprehensive health system that recognizes in this country that we have a problem with violence in general, not just gun violence, but violence in general. I would actually think, in closing, that there are literally dozens of measures that we could take. I would love to see our senators, in particular, the hundred of them, sit down and put into three columns things that they definitely think should be implemented, things that they might want to take a look at, and things that they definitely will not support. Go through these measures. Pigeonhole them into one of three things. Forget the ones that you can't solve and you don't have a majority. Adopt the ones that are obvious, that you have a clear majority, and put them into effect. Then spend the time on that middle column, going one by one, finding out what you can do to make our communities safer. I think those nineteen fourth graders and their families demand that we do this. And I know I've said a lot about this. I'm a former teacher, thirty-five years in a classroom, in a high school classroom. I often thought about this topic when I was at Car Place. And it surely came home a decade ago in Connecticut during those shootings there. As a grandparent, I just cannot imagine what goes through a person's mind to walk into an elementary school classroom and kill innocent children who have nothing to do with their violent behavior. So I make it a plea. And I hope that the community, I would love to have a rally out here one day to be able to get hundreds and hundreds of people and stop, let's not make this a political issue. This is not about taking guns away from hunters and a father that wants to go out with his daughter or mother wants to go out with her son hunting, and even the kid who's twelve years of age. They're going to learn the respect of a weapon from a parent. They're going to learn proper technique, but they're not going to be carrying an AK forty-seven. That's just not going to happen. These weapons are not made. And the hesitation of a police department to go into that scene for over an hour just shows me more and more that he's not an experienced military kid. He's an eighteen-year-old, but he's carrying a weapon that's so destructive that can inflict so much. I fired these weapons. They're massive, what you can do. And I don't think our police officers should be put into that situation. And I surely don't think our children. They're crying for adults to behave. Forget the arguing, let's solve the issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, we're waiting for the Suffolk County Water Authority executives to get here to actually sign the contract. So in the meantime, we'll hold off on that.
Mr. Supervisor, this is Stephen Kyler. Can I just chime in on that?
Yes.
Pursuant to Town Law Section two oh nine Q fourteen, the Suffolk County Authority lease with the town for service to the Westneck Water District, as you're aware, is subject to a permissive referendum. The resolution authorizing the execution of the lease was passed on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Petition protesting the resolution must have been filed by May twenty-ninth to trigger an election on same or a vote. Madam Clerk, has a petition been filed with your office regarding this?
No, not as of today.
All right, then I just wanted for the record to show that we are able to proceed with the execution of that lease when the executives get here.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Okay, while we're waiting. You want to start? Want to go on to the work sessions? They pulled in? Okay. All right, they pulled in, so we'll kill a little bit of time. You know, in Jim's comments, he mentioned the word "community" a number of times. And within the last week, we had two events that really exemplify what the Shelter Island community is. Thursday night, we had the Lions Club Citizen of the Year Award. And it went to a very deserving Mr. and Mrs. Pfizer, Pfizer, Pfizer?
Pfizer.
Pfizer. And it was just a very well-attended event. And yesterday, we had our Memorial Day Parade, which was another, you know, very well-attended event and very meaningful time. Zack Monday spoke very well, not about himself, but about the country in general and remembering. And what I'm trying to say is, this is what the Shelter Island community is. You know, the people that were at the, not only the people involved in the actual awards and the Lions themselves, but all the people that went there and all the people that attended the parade yesterday to honor those fallen, but also those that served the Shelter Island community. And I think we need to keep that in mind. And, you know, we are a community and we're trying very hard to remain a community. And just as the country is in crazy times, we're in crazy times. And, you know, I can't stress enough that this town board is doing everything we possibly can to preserve, you know, the sense of community that we have. That's all I'll say on that. Okay, our honored guest just arrived. I'm going to ask Joe Fenora to make a little presentation of, you know, what happened, where we are, and what we're going to do.
Okay. All right, thanks, everyone. Today's a big day for the Westneck Water Community. Today Supervisor Siller is going to execute an agreement for the largest town-sponsored water infrastructure project in island history and a commitment to a long-term operating agreement with Suffolk County Water Authority. That commitment is for a one-point-seven-million-dollar effort to repair and enhance the town's only public water system. The upgrades will bring our system into compliance with state and county regulations, conserve groundwater through the elimination of leaks and losses, and serve as a lens into our aquifer through extensive water quality testing and monitoring. This is my opportunity, really, to thank those who have helped develop this long-term relationship with Suffolk County Water Authority. The Westneck Water Board, led by Lisa Shaw, was here today. Have been instrumental in crafting this agreement, one that best suits the needs of the customers that they know so well. We look forward to continuing to rely on that water board and their critical role in maintaining community engagement. Another big thank you goes out to Tim Hopkins and Stephen Kylie for their time, expertise, and sincerity in drafting this contract. I'm thankful for Joe Picorni, who's here today, for his efforts to get to know our community. Joe's attended dozens of Westneck Water meetings, town hall work sessions, and made several countless, I should say, field visits to our facilities to meet customers and to examine the infrastructure that we have in place. He's even offered his personal cell phone number as a substitute for a complaint hotline. So thank you to Joe for his continued. I'd like to thank the town board and Supervisor Siller for making this commitment to enhancing our water system and for choosing to address our infrastructure issues with a sustainable and cost-effective approach. I'd also be remiss if I did not extend a thank you to my predecessor, John Cronin, and former town board member Mike Bebon, who have been and continue to be great advocates for engineering solutions to meet our community's challenges. And both Mike and John helped establish our initial relationship with Suffolk County Water during their tenures with the town. I'm proud to be partnering with Suffolk County Water and to introduce their representatives who are here this afternoon to celebrate our new partnership. With us here today are Joe Picorni, Deputy CEO of Operations, and Chairman of the Suffolk County Water Authority Board, and former Suffolk County Executive Pat Halp. So thanks very much for joining us today. I'd open it up to you guys if you'd like to make some remarks. And I think that we have a contract to sign.
Yep.
Yep.
Pat, before you start, one second, please. I just want to acknowledge the Westneck Water Board, Lisa's here today. Prior to my first time around as town supervisor, Hood Chairman took over the Westneck Water System. And it was really by the seat of his pants. And thankfully for Lisa and Ann Dunbar, who really were the key instruments in making it work. These volunteers made this system work for almost twenty-five years. And we couldn't have done it without them. Going forward, it was a tough time because there was always a sense of ownership because it was your system, you did all the work. And, you know, Suffolk County Water Authority was always, "Well, we don't really want them on Shelter Island, blah, blah, blah." But, you know, Lisa kept an open mind and the Westneck Water Board did. And they met with us on a number of occasions. They met with Joe and Joe, and we made it work. So hopefully, this is going to be a good membership, a good.
Partnership.
Partnership, thank you. Okay, Pat?
Supervisor, back to members of the town board. You know, I've been following the Shelter Island reporter accounts of these meetings from the get-go. And Joe, you persevered. But I have to be serious for a second. This board and the Westneck Water Board and everybody else who is interested, did your due diligence. You really dug into this and asked all of the critical questions. And Joe, to his credit, and for that matter, everybody that asked the questions, they really wanted to hear the answers, and he gave very respectful, honest assessment as to where things are at. Look, providing public water today is harder than ever, given the things, you know, that your engineer talked about. The regulatory environment is very, very strict. The cost of infrastructure has gone up enormously. And at the end of the day, and this is how I think about it as chairman of the Water Authority Board, is our job is to make sure that people of Suffolk County have the highest quality drinking water possible at the most affordable rates. But you can't compromise quality. So we're happy, this is a partnership. This is not the Water Authority, just the Water. This is a partnership with all the citizens of the Westneck Water District and the town board. And I can assure you that every commitment that's been made by our representatives at the Suffolk County Water Authority will be fulfilled. And we're fortunate that we have this institution that was created, really didn't get off the grounds until the early fifties. And we have, I consider, the best public water company in America, right here in Suffolk County. We've got our own internal experts. These people know hydrology, they know how to build, they build, they design, and they execute. And they've done it from one end of Suffolk County to another, and we're happy to be of help here at Shelter Island.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Patrick, I have to say one thing.
What's that, sir?
This is going back probably forty years.
Well, I had dark hair then.
I know that. So I had hair. I had, my wife and I had a house in Amityville. And you knocked on our door when you were running for county executive. And I was so impressed that I never forgot that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I walked on a lot of doors. By the way, I was a lot thinner as I knocked on our doors. And my wife keeps, "Well, let's get out and start doing some walking again." I do some, but not enough.
Thank you for coming out today. Thank you.
I didn't really think I was going to say something, but I am very happy that you give me the opportunity. So first of all, express my thanks to the supervisor for keeping an open mind and listening to what the Water Authority, I think, brought to the table here. And I think when I saw that and recognized that you and Joe and John Cronin, to his credit, and I think it's great that you mentioned John, that you had an open mind, and even Lisa had an open mind, right? I mean, some people said to me, "Oh, they're not going to want it." But I noticed when I talked to you that you were listening and you had an open mind. And I think for any negotiation to happen, if you have two sides that have an open mind, I think you can make progress. So it's wonderful, it's been wonderful working with you. I'm not going away, so we will continue to work together as we improve this system. And all I can, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much, very much. Lisa, before we do the formal signing, you want to say anything?
Well, I wasn't prepared, but I will. On behalf of the Westneck Water District, yes. In the beginning, it was a little rough. Because when we were established in nineteen ninety-seven, we were established to sort of not be included in Suffolk County Water, underwater authority management. But then eventually, we saw that it was becoming more and more difficult as a board and as a small group of volunteers to maintain a water district. And so we entered this conversation, and it was imperative to keep an open mind and look at all of the alternatives. And Amber, you know, was in the trenches with us doing the numbers. And so we are appreciative, we do look forward to the management and going to the professional body of water professionals. And I just look forward to a good relationship when we still have your number. That should have been in the lease. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, again, Lisa, thank you very much for all you've done.
You're welcome.
Okay, I guess you guys want to follow along. Okay, we're going to do a quick change of order here. We're going to go to number four before number three, because Karen and Brian are here. We had a discussion last week, I believe it was last week, business on town property, and we felt there wasn't a need for an actual permit. But Stephen Kyler, you know, in his thought of protecting the town, thought maybe there was a need. So Stephen, you want to tell us what your thoughts are?
Yeah, and hearing from Christina, the exact operation, I think it triggers thirty-six fourteen point two commerce on town property. So there would have to be town approval by an agreement.
Stephen, what would be the difference between this and like an ice cream truck that comes on the island and stops at the beach and moves on?
Well, again, the one that I was told would be the equivalent, would be like a food truck that goes to different construction sites, and that's on town property. I mean, sorry, not on town property.
Right.
Private property. But this only is involving beaches and parks. So if the ice cream truck comes to a beach and, you know, solicits its ice cream, I would argue you would need town approval to do that.
Okay. And again, I'll speak for myself, and I'll wait to hear from everybody else. But the impression I got was we were okay with this because it's not a permanent, you know, like the food truck at the beach, that they're going to be there every day, they're going to be in and out a couple of times a day. Again, my only concern was, you know, if they need water health approval. But other than that, I think it had our blessing. I just want to check with everybody else.
Yeah, I think this is an unusual situation, our March thirty-first deadline. I think we can just go forward with this. But, you know, are we going to use the application just to get to the?
I think we probably should, just to cross the Vs and not the Is.
All right.
Yeah.
So, but it's clear that it's going to be moving, you know, not stationary, because that was something we already considered.
Amber?
I'm good. I didn't realize, you know, going back and looking at the code, as Stephen said, that proximity to the beach causes it to fall under needing a permit.
Right.
Right. You know, I agree with you.
Okay. And again, just the way things are today, we want to make sure we're doing everything a hundred percent by the book. So, thank you.
Yeah, you have to come up to the mic.
You're fine, okay. All right, so we're going to go ahead with this. Well, you filled out the application, we'll approve it and we'll move forward. No, we haven't.
We'll approve it at a town works, a board meeting, which is June tenth?
Yeah.
June tenth, so not until June tenth, is that, that's right, okay.
All right, thank you, thanks for coming back. Okay, next on the agenda is the, we had a discussion about changing some of the, possibly changing the schedule for the work sessions and the town board meetings. We said we would let the town digest it and see if we have any comments. BJ, you're in?
Yeah, well, you know, and during, in the meantime, since we've had the initial discussion, certainly we had a very jam-packed work session, and someone was like, "Well, so you really want to go to eight o'clock?" If we cut one work session out a month, but I still would like to try. But that's, and, you know, the idea that we were saying that move everything to Tuesdays. So it's three weeks of work session, fourth week town board meeting. But wait a minute, but Dottie had the, now that's coming back to me, Dottie had the.
Two, one, two, one.
Yeah. Two, one, two, one?
Yeah, because it would be the third week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You would keep the three-week interval by going to work session, work session, and then Friday meeting.
Right. And I think that, but Dottie had the point of check pay, bill paying becomes a little bit problematic. But I, so I don't know, you know, if this is tenable, if it really causes chaos for the town clerk. You know, although we might want it if it's not good for her office.
What I'd like to suggest is, and Jim had brought this up a couple of times, is I'd like to schedule a town hall meeting, just open to the public to discuss what they want to discuss. And let's put this out there.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, I'd like to do it early summer.
Yes.
And again, it comes down to, you know, what's a good night? Is Friday a good night? Is Thursday a good night? Is, you know, Saturday a good day?
My view is now that we're hybrid.
Well, exactly.
As long as it's not during work hours.
Right.
You know, it's traditional work hours. I think we're, we can, you know, schedule it.
Yeah. So Dottie, I think what I'd like to do is we'll schedule, we'll figure out a date we can all live with and just put it out there that it's open, it's going to be an open forum to, you know, just talk about, you know, what's on your mind, what people, you know, see the needs of the town.
Okay, we can do that.
We'll figure a date out, and that'll be one, certainly.
Right. One of the agendas, yeah.
Okay.
And where we should do it.
We just have to come up with a date.
Yeah, I would prefer if we can do this on either early morning or in the evening at a convenient time. I'd like rules, you know, some rules set aside that, you know, we have these, we're going to try this out, no agenda. And I think that's great, open it up to the public, have, you know, a limit on speaking and come to a microphone. And again, criticism is welcomed, as long as it's set in an appropriate manner. But what I just don't want to see that session become is, you know, an angle, you know, a chance to really vent and get things out of hand.
Save that for the emails.
Yeah. Save that for the emails. But let's be constructive because, obviously, not everybody can get to these meetings. It affords a perfect opportunity to not be limited by an agenda and where you can speak about a variety of topics and just say, "Hey, listen, this is something I really felt deeply about." As I just did, by the way, to open up this meeting. Something I've, you know, I didn't just think about this for, you know, five minutes. This has been on my mind since last Tuesday night, so.
Since, Jim, since this is a new idea.
Yep.
A new, yeah, just new. And people are, you know, in an effort for us to get our work done, you know, we've now limited it to three minutes. Part of, I think we should have limits in terms of how long somebody could talk, just so everybody that's there would get a chance to talk. But I don't know what those limits should be. Ten minutes, you know, three minutes seems to really be a little too short. Although for us, it's a necessary evil because we have to get through some work. But at this meeting, it's maybe. But at this meeting, it's maybe, were you thinking about that or?
Yeah, I'm thinking about like, if you have something that you really, you think is going to require more than three minutes to explain. I'm here as a private citizen. I have the town board in front of me. Here's a topic that I really would like you to focus in on. Topic, little introduction, and I followed it up with a, something I'd like to hand to you to distribute amongst the town board. It breaks down my, you know, some of the points and some of the recommendations that I feel would be necessary. So if you want to augment your introduction comments, you know, for three minutes and your brief explanation of the issue, then follow that up with additional things that we can sit, digest, you know, at a later time and bring them up at future board meetings. You know, they have an opportunity. And by the way, if we really think it carries a lot of merit, let's invite that person back in to a regular town board meeting and say, by the way, we went through your suggestion. We love your suggestion. We've read through it. Want you to come in because we want to talk about that thing in greater detail with you, you know? So that's a nice way to kind of bridge that gap a little bit.
Okay. Okay, so we'll come up with a date that we think will work for everybody.
Rules of engagement.
Okay, next on the list, we have a leave replacement for the Recreation Department. Amber, you want to just give us an update on this?
Bethany's going to be going out on maternity leave soon. I don't have the exact date. She sent me an email, but I did not have time when I got back on the island to stop and get my laptop on the way here. But I spoke with her last week. And while she's out, she'll be on paid family leave. So her, you know, I can't remember if it's eighty percent this year or seventy five percent, but she'll be getting that portion of her salary paid for by the insurance company employee, you know, the premium that we pay in for the employees covers that. So in the interim, Emily is going to substitute in for her. So the request will be to bump Emily up to Bethany's salary during that period that she's out. And then there's also somebody else. I don't know who the third person is who's going to be bumped up into Emily's position to cover everything. But we had this a couple of years ago when we had a couple other maternity leaves and we hired somebody. And we got it so that the numbers worked out, so that the town, the whole point of paid family leave is we're able to keep people's jobs. We're able to replace them temporarily, and the town is kept whole and services keep running. So I will double check. She's gone through all the numbers. I'll double check that email. I'll circulate it to everybody. We'll get it drafted into a resolution for next Fridays.
Yeah. There is no question that the most qualified person on this island, you know, beyond Bethany would be Emily. Emily and Bethany work side by side on so many issues. She, they know one another's jobs pretty well. And thank God for situations like this where Emily can fill right in very, very nicely. And I think we do have some support at the FIT Center that's going to back up, you know, Emily. We have Cal Lewis and Kelsey Mc Manskey, who are also going to fill in at the FIT Center during the summer. But I don't know whether that's in anticipation of this or not, you know, but, you know, it's very doable.
You know, no, it's a good transition.
It is. It is a great.
A good place with Emily there.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's that.
Okay. Okay, that's it for the formal part of the agenda. We'll go around the room. Meg?
No.
You had a nice weekend.
I did have a lovely weekend. It was beautiful out. No, I think that we covered everything last meeting, and then we don't have any meetings between then and now, so I'm good.
Good. Okay. Jim?
Go to Amber first.
Amber?
I've got nothing.
Amber had a nice weekend also. BJ?
Nice weekend.
Okay. Jim, right back to you.
So, so as Jerry said, one of the things I forgot to say yesterday at the Memorial Day Parade, and I want to emphasize it, and I'm going to write a little piece about it. But, you know, a special thank you to all our volunteers here, particularly our volunteer fire department that does an amazing job. Our EMTs that had two calls, I believe, actually during the ceremony, one up at the golf course and one someplace else, that are off the charts, that we really appreciate both of you so much. There are literally dozens and dozens of men and women that participate in both the fire department and the EMS that do a great job, and thank you. And the other one, of course, is the police department. And let's not forget that a year ago, we were thanking nurses and doctors and that medical community of ours that continued to work to protect the community from COVID. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. And our police department, which does an excellent, excellent job. Thank you very, very much. Also like to thank the Lions Club because that organization is, again, off the charts. They're at everything. They're such a giving bunch of people. And yesterday, that was a very nice function that they had following the Memorial Day Parade. I will say the microphone situation, the sound system for the future, a Memorial Day Parade needs to be corrected. I'm going to work with the Legion on that. We need to do something much better. It's never a problem at Veterans Day because it's a tenth of the crowd. But Memorial Day, where there are literally hundreds and hundreds of people, and you can't get them all, especially during the hens of COVID, where people are all packed in there. They're out, you know, hundreds of yards. They can't hear the speakers. And that's something that we have to do a better job. So I will personally take care of that. I do want to thank Mike Monday, the young man, ex-marine, once a marine, always a marine. Did a superb job with the microphone, as Jerry said, very good message to the public. Again, not about himself, but about, you know, a soldier that perished trying to save an Afghani in some rough waters in a river while in Afghanistan, and nobody, and he dove in and put his life on the line, and it cost him his life. So hats off to Mike for stepping forward. I'm so glad that our young military is stepping forward and assuming some more responsibility because the old guys are getting old, like me, and we do need to pass that torch on. And I want to thank everybody. The attendance was spectacular, very much appreciated by all of us. And thank you very, very much for coming out and supporting Memorial Day Parade. And the thing that we do at Pecosi Dock, the Lost at Sea Ceremony at eight o'clock in the morning. I want to thank the singers that came down there, the Currs, and everybody that John Kerr recruited. You sounded tremendous. Get a great job down at Pecosi Dock, and just thank everybody. In the future, the FIT Center, there was a little confusion about that in the paper, I guess, and it's been corrected. I think it was a mistake where we thought that somehow we were going to try to expand the existing FIT Center at the school. That is not the case. I mean, that, I want to be very clear about that. You know, we were talking about expansion. We were talking about expansion of our community center to house possibly the FIT Center as well. Or Plan B was to find a brand new location for the FIT Center. So I just want to make sure that everybody is clear on that, that was the intent. And it's being, it's being changed as we speak. But thank you very, very much. That's it for me.
Okay. Dottie, you have anything for us?
Oh, no, thanks.
How the parking permits been going?
Oh, they're going. Very good. Yep. It's good. We'll get them over with.
There we go. Okay, Stephen?
Nothing, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Julia, you good? Julie? Nothing from the reporter? Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss?
I'm good, Jerry.
Julie, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, quick meeting. I'm going to make a motion. We go into executive session. Were you going to talk about a potential land acquisition? And we're also going to talk about the beginning of the PBA contract negotiations.
Second that motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.